And we have with us John Morse from IT Department and Peter Carlson, who is a consultant on such matters and has been for some time. And so I guess we'll start with you, John, in presenting your budget, if you would.
Good afternoon, everyone.
You know what? I would like to say, you have very, very, what do I want to say? Expanded budget here. I mean, you have a lot of different things in it. And I was thinking, instead of going through every single one, if you could maybe categorize it into some major categories, like the technology and equipment, maybe applications, software applications you want to do, technical support for the county, and maybe some new services that you want to have.
Yep.
That might be. I don't know how you plan to present it, but...
To support what you're saying, there's a couple of places where the measures are the same, both for security and for implementation. Perhaps if you looked at it in terms of that kind of a plan, and give its elements, as to which is operational, which is essential as far as security, that might be useful.
What I planned to do was kind of talk about themes that may not be readily first, that may not be readily apparent in the budget.
Okay.
But definitely are there in a lot of different places. And one of the reasons that you see things, the way Bill described, is exactly that reason, that there are certain measures, certain things we plan to do, have dual impacts or dual effects, be able to increase security and possibly being able to add additional services as well. So literally, some of the things that we're trying to do here do have dual purpose.
Yeah. And the other thing I wanted to mention, too, is the website. You know, that's another one, I think, that deserves some specific attention.
Yeah. Yeah, I can definitely talk about that. It's not in my initial outline. It is in, as you know, it's in the goals and measures. And I can talk a little bit about what specifically we want to do. That happened to be something Peter just asked about. So I literally have just reviewed it. So no problem whatsoever. But after reviewing and preparing for today, I kind of thought there were four themes, you know, to this budget. And they are, you know, what can we do to increase IT human capacity somehow, because of where we are at? Number two, what we need to do in terms of OpenCape preparing from an infrastructure and a connectivity point of view. The third piece that I wanted to highlight for you folks was the continued implementation of the strategic technology assessment. And the fourth area that I wanted to try to highlight was being able to change our approach to projects and implementations for county departments. So, and I'll try to make this fairly, fairly brief. But I'm going to hit a few points on each of those areas. In terms of our IT human capacity, as it were, in some ways, this has been the most challenging year for IT. Our salaried staff, which would be Billy Travers, our network administrator, and myself, have worked more hours than ever before. We have reviewed and streamlined our job responsibilities. So from the point of view of, and I think Peter would back this up, Billy, me, myself, and Peter, I think we've been more productive in terms of being employees than ever before, because the job descriptions are more focused. During this past year, through your help, we've been able to implement an overtime program for the help desk staff. And what that's resulted is more hours dedicated to, you know, helping support our employees here in terms of IT support than ever before. And that has been very, very helpful. Additionally, this year, with your help, we added an IT internship program this past summer. And we brought on two kids for the summer. It was extremely helpful. The summer went exactly as predicted. Our workload went way up. These two young men, they configured over 40 computers for us. They completed an entire survey of the warranty status of every computer on the county campus, and logged that into our asset management tracking system, so that whenever we go to work on a piece of hardware, we know that the warranty information is correct. We know whether there's a vendor there that we can tie into fixing, helping us fix a piece of equipment when it's failing or not. The two kids that we had in the internship program were talented enough that they could actually provide some phone support, and go onsite and do some hardware and software fixes for us as well. As I've looked at our help desk statistics over the past year, really, the baseline number keeps going, keeps going up, notwithstanding what we're doing on a month-to-month basis. You know, it means, the best I can say is that, like, we're struggling to tread water. As I think Mark can attest to, too, we've talked with him, we've certainly had a few bumps in the road in this past year, in terms of working on IT projects with departments. And they're looking for additional, not only support from IT in terms of project implementation, but also communication that just isn't there within the current FTE, for lack of a better word. So that's why, for the third year in a row, I'm asking for an additional two positions, as Peter and I had identified in the original strategic technology assessment. One, I have titled here as a service desk analyst, and another, I have titled here as an additional technical support specialist. I have requested an additional position in there called an IT project manager, which would literally be devoted to helping, from a communication point of view, a project management point of view, the project portfolio that we're dealing with. And based on some initial conversations that Mark and I had had, I did slide in something like a regional services coordinator. But I understand, you know, you guys are starting to really think and talk about that and how it would work. And this was based on something, a conversation that Mark and I had probably about two months ago. So I understand you might be looking and doing it a different way at this point in time. So that's all that was intended to be. And I certainly understand where we are financially. So I know how hard it is to do any of this from a human resources point of view. But I certainly had to make the pitch here, there's plenty of other, there's plenty of employees in other county departments that give my staff internal feedback that, gee, the situation seems kind of unfair. You know, I'm not going there, you know, I'm just asking for you guys to consider it. The other things, before I move on to the OpenCape piece, that I wanted to highlight in terms of the human capital, is two requests that I had put in here. And that is an increase in the overtime budget. As I said, you folks were not helpful enough to fund that for us this year. Just using my first-year projections, this year's funding money is basically almost gone. So I'll give you an idea of why I'm asking for that increase. You know, this is based on what I think would allow me to keep this level of service for over a 12-month period.
Can I ask a question on the overtime? Who receives the overtime?
Only the help desk personnel.
The help, just one person?
No, there are three of them.
Three, three on the help desk.
Yep.
That's including yourself?
No.
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 I'm exempt.
That's what I thought.
I am exempt, and Billy, the network administrator, is exempt. So there's no overtime there.
So it's the other two employees?
Yeah.
Could you say their names?
Yeah. So we've got Laura Brown, we've got Ryan Johnson, we've got Chris Burke.
Okay. And one of those people are through the Cape Cod Commission?
Well, technically, Billy's salary is through the commission. So no, they're all IT department.
Okay.
Who are receiving the overtime.
But the Cape, but his, the baseline salary is paid...
Billy's, Billy Travers' salary comes out of the Cape Cod Commission.
Cape Cod Commission, but they don't pay the overtime?
He doesn't get overtime.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. All right. He's the one that's saying, all right. Okay.
Any other questions on that?
Okay.
And I did ask for an increase in the temporary employee line as well. And that's kind of to simply, to fully fund the intern program this year at the level that we did it last year. I cobbled together professional services and employee money to do the two FTEs last summer. And I'm simply seeing if we can fund through regular operational funds for that this summer.
What was, you gave them a stipend, or did you give them, was it a salary?
It equated to an hourly wage.
An hourly wage. Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say it's like 15 an hour.
Yeah, it was 15 an hour.
That's easily what we do.
Yeah, I kind of used the baseline of what we were doing for internship programs at other county departments.
Okay.
And I got positive feedback on the wage level from both, when I interviewed them at the end of the summer. So...
Okay, good.
The second piece that I wanted to highlight was OpenCape. Now that the OpenCape project really is on the doorstep, it is time to begin work and preparations from an operational perspective. We, Barnstable County, of course, will be a user, just like the towns will be. And both the operational and the capital budget reflect these preparations. The single biggest request in this budget, under wide-area networks, is, it's 250,000 of that capital request, is for laterals to connect the off-campus locations where we have county staff to the network. That would include Children's Cove, the fire training academy, Farmhouse, the two AmeriCorps houses.
Is that hard wire, or is that the...
That is fiber. That is fiber laterals. That's right. Basically, the way it works is OpenCape gave each town three connections to their network. OpenCape gave the county one connection to the network. Everybody, Barnstable County and all the towns, you know, are looking to build out their networks with fiber in order to put all options on the network. So we're looking to do exactly what everybody else is trying to do as well.
If I may, the question of a wireless interface has come up in the towns as being, as being a way to avoid installing fiber to a particular location, which may change. And so my question is, is it feasible to consider a wireless interface that would take advantage of the backbone?
There's no guarantee that OpenCape will provide that without their, without the wireless infrastructure that they're attempting to build as their, as their, it's not part of their backbone. It's part of their redundancy effort.
Yes.
So it's not something you want to rely on. And this is what I've heard Dan say. I don't believe it was in a meeting with IT. I believe it was in one of his presentations. You don't necessarily want to rely on that as your primary method, because the same guarantee of uptime will not be there from OpenCape.
Sort of, to follow up on Bill's, because I have the same kind of question, because I remember when I saw this number, I was like, oh my God, that's a big number.
Right.
And it's, you know, guys don't have the bid in hand. Maybe you do.
Well, the next thing I was going to, to tell you where that at...
Okay, let me go back, though. So before you get to the bid. So I see it the same way sort of Bill is. So you have OpenCape, and here's this conduit, OpenCape. And then you have Point A. And you are trying to get from Point A, which is at OpenCape, to Point B, which is, say, the Farmhouse.
Right.
And even though OpenCape is not providing you this wireless, is it feasible to set up your own little, whatever it would be, to connect to Point B wirelessly, much cheaper than this, with the same performance, I guess, is sort of the caveat?
Not based on the experience that I've had. Okay.
Wireless is not there yet.
Yeah.
With the exception, I mean, you could spend a lot more than that. You, Matt Sturman, just did this same, similar project, and covered a geographic area of like, it was like 11 miles or 10 miles, or something like that. Problem is, you can't rely on it. And that's a $5 or $6 million project.
Okay. And we did do, we did have a vendor out here roughly two or three years ago to look at the possibility of creating our own wireless network that would tie to, and we did site surveys to Children's Cove, Fire Training Academy, and Farmhouse. And they definitely found issues. And it was, just for those three sites, the initial estimates I got was still $100,000. And on top of that, there were issues similar, beyond reliability. There literally were issues that they encountered, despite, even though the Farmhouse, which you wouldn't really think, it's not really that far away, when you talk about it.
But it is. Could I ask, too, what would be the value for Farmhouse and Children's Cove to be connected this year as opposed to next year? Or what is the value to them of having that connection?
Right. Well, I think, I think there's a couple of things that you would think to do. Certainly, part of it involves the services that might be, you know...
Let's talk about the Farmhouse first.
Right. Right. The Farmhouse is probably, out of all the connections on there, it's my number-one priority to do, because there, we have insufficient internet access in order to do the things that we need to do, in order for them to do the things they need to do. We need to, their data needs, we need to help them expand those. And if we don't have a robust internet connection, then we're literally going to have to put hardware, servers, and things out there in order, because they just can't suffice connecting back over the Comcast VPN that we have set for them now. I mean, certainly, Mark can attest to the number of complaints, because I shared those with you, about, you know, the network out there at the Farmhouse. You know, so that in and of itself...
And there's times even the commission still has glitches. I mean, I don't know how long it's been since, but I did hear it probably in the last, I haven't been over there as much, but it's a couple of months, probably.
Yeah, I think, I think we've got some, you know, we always are looking to improve the wireless situation over the commission, definitely. I think from a wired perspective, I think we're okay, other than things keep, that building keeps building out. So we always are adding up, sinking a little money in terms of improving things.
Okay.
So I, and if I could just address, we are doing, Elaine Davis and I are working with several IT department directors out at the towns. And we are in the midst of an RFP for, to look at these laterals. And we, I think, within a week or so, we'll award that RFP. From the information that I have thus far, I definitely expect to be emailing Mark probably within this week, and requesting to reduce that $250,000 number. That number was based on information provided to me by a subcontractor of OpenCape. And it does appear, I don't want to say anything else, of course, because it's a public meeting, and the RFP has not been awarded, but it does appear as if the numbers that we may be getting will be lower from these contractors to the RFP. So I should be able to reduce that number.
50%? 40%? 10%? Ballpark?
That's where, I would, I would give you that number if it was 100%.
Okay. I mean, I'll turn the question around. It's sort of, is a little bit of a follow-up to Pat's question. You answered it for the Farmhouse. So I think, sort of, the next question that's going to be facing the towns and us. And so you see these numbers, and they're like, oh my God, we don't have that kind of money. So then you have to ask yourself, well, what they have, wherever they are, is that satisfactory? Or do they need the extra oomph that the OpenCape connection would provide?
Right. Part of it, part of it is, and every entity has to evaluate location by location. You know, how important is that to us? What are we doing there? What would we use of the OpenCape services? You know, if we're going to use applications that are on that, then it's a no-brainer. You've got to figure out how to do it. You know, which certainly, over time, we probably are going to do with some of these locations. If you're just using the internet access, then it becomes more of a cost analysis thing. You know, let's say that at the Bourne AmeriCorps house, let's say we would consider the internet access to be adequate. Then if that's the case, then if we invest in the fiber, how much is that particular run, how much would we be able to terminate our contract for internet access there? How much would it take for us to, how many years to get that back?
I got you. So you've done that, is sort of the question.
Yes. In my head, I have that. And that's what, the bigger offices, with the more vibrant, you know, the more vibrant...
That's a long-term goal.
It'd be good to see it on paper.
Yes.
Get everybody on. But if you're tight for money, and you can't afford it, then you sort of go...
Well, that was my question. How many, how many county offices that are external, no, wait a minute, are in this, so that maybe it could be programmed over a period of a year, or two years, or three years, instead of trying to do it all in the same year?
Right. I put every office that I thought we could use in there. I can tell you. So there's eight or nine sites. I can tell you that, absolutely. And that might, may, I'm not sure if it's in your packet or not. And I know the folks, the OpenCape subcontractor were saying, oh, you'll never get as cheap a price as doing it when they're letting the fiber down. But we've been looking at that. And because, again, talking about an RFP that's not closed, because the respondents are also on state contract, that may not necessarily be the case for us. So it might give us some additional flexibility to not, to not have to do them now, if we have to delay some.
Okay. But if we did have to delay it, then you're talking about if they have laid the fiber. If, well, it's above ground, so it's not, we're not burying it at this point. So we're not digging up roads. But some places, it may be, if it's possible.
Actually, we may have, we may have that issue, from what I understand. The septic test center is out on the base.
Right.
And part of, it looks like they may be burying part of the OpenCape fiber at that point. So that might affect when we want to do that.
Yes. So that, we want to make sure that we're coordinating that at least.
Exactly.
And what would be the costs of hooking up later, as, after they've done their run-through of placing this fiber? So that would be a good number to know, that if we did it now, as opposed to having to redo it. Yeah, setting priorities, because obviously, we're not going to have all the money this year to do all these unless we tap some of them. Yeah. But then there's, but then there is that thing to think about. I mean, if you're going to save $500,000 down the road...
That's a trade-off.
They might be a trade-off.
Once, it's probably cheaper.
Town meeting in Falmouth appropriated, I think it was $172,000, to add six additional sites to what was already approved for OpenCape.
That's right.
So I don't know what sites those are. So that makes a difference in the cost.
I do, but I don't have that with me.
So you can't just go by the numbers alone.
And could I ask, have we done a survey of the court systems and the law, and what they would like? I mean, some, some parts of the building we get wireless, other parts of this building we don't. How can we make sure that we're servicing the needs of not only the county, but those who are our tenants?
Tenants, yes.
And, and they have, you know, great needs as well.
Like, how do we get other people to pay for some tests?
Well, I mean, well, not only that, but I mean, what's it going to cost, and how are we going to integrate that in there? Because it is going to be something that's...
With, with respect to the state court system, Dan was negotiating separately with them, because they had the desire to attach all of the state, via fiber, all of the state offices throughout the entire county area directly onto there. So I'm proceeding that, I am assuming that that is still going to happen. And of course, there's security issues. So their connection kind of needs to be separate from their data connection anyway.
Right.
You know, we certainly have been inquiring, to the extent that we can, through department heads at the state, to talk to the judges and find out about wireless issues. The other reason we're doing that is, as we put in wireless in the court buildings, we don't want to be stepping on anything. So I'm, you know, still waiting to hear back from people about that.
And have you done any, you know, I know that you have some system hooked up, and some of it's been, you know, played with. But it's over at the district attorney's office. So I'm not sure if that's included, since it is part of the legal system and the law system. So it might be worth the conversation.
Yeah. I'm assuming that they are tied into what the state is doing.
Maybe I should just mention that Dan, then, if you haven't contacted the...
Just, just to make sure we're not making an assumption that we're wrong on.
Right. And that somebody's being excluded. Absolutely.
Now, here, we're already fibered. So...
Right. Here, we're fibered on the main campus. The only thing we have to do is worry about the one connection to...
The hookup.
The hookup to OpenCape.
How about, how about Orleans Second District Court?
Second District Court is not included. So that is among, now, it is in my $250,000 request.
$250,000, okay. Yeah.
Yes.
How about, and this one, it wouldn't surprise me if you said no, the Wellfleet House?
No, that's in the script.
That's in there, too. Okay.
It is. Okay.
Yep.
All right. And then we're also looking at our wireless system.
Well, I'll talk to him off-camera, because I'm sick of Bill...
So you're, you're really including all the costs in the county budget?
You don't want me to try to...
When there, could there be some reimbursements, or some other...
If you spent $10 to hook this building up to the state, we would bill the state for 56%, if I remember my $5.60.
Why wouldn't they pay all of it? It's to their benefit only.
Because they occupy 56% of this building. That's how the lease works. So if I can legitimately say...
And the lease includes, they can be paid for...
It includes kind of all of these associated things. Like, if I have to buy 10 lightbulbs...
Oh, I see.
Well, theoretically, if I use all 10 in their space, they'll, we'll bill them for all 10. But if I buy 10 lightbulbs, they're going to pay for 5.6 of them, because that's sort of how it works. So when John, let's say the janitor comes through in the evening, and he collects the trash from here, and then he goes upstairs and collects, we pay, the state reimburses us for 56% of that particular janitor's. This is what I bring, let me just say, this is why I bring up the issue with John, where he said, well, yeah, they'll pay for it. But if that janitor only works in the new old jail...
Yes.
Then the state is going to pay you nothing, because he's not doing anything for the state.
Right. Yeah, I got that last, I got that conversation last week. So I think the monies then should probably somehow reflect what other revenue sources would reduce that for us. Is that...
It does. When I do that in the budget, you see those actually pieces in there. So yeah, you see that.
Yeah. And you can't be for... I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, it's fine. Absolutely. I mean, whatever, whatever we need to do to, you know, so that you folks at least understand what I'm asking for.
Right.
Other...
Not that we really do, but...
Here's one. You could ask George Price to pay for the lateral hookup to the Wellfleet House, because it's his house.
Oh, well, maybe I will. I'll, you know, I'll float that. Then Seashore pays for that. I'll float that. I mean, really? Why not?
Good luck.
What percentage of the use of it would be his, as opposed to...
Well, it's 100% ours, and we had it a year.
Yeah, we just leased it.
It's owned by the National Seashore.
I'm talking about the use of the network. Is that the mostly Seashore, or would it be AmeriCorps?
Well, it's AmeriCorps who's been in it. Been in it for about 15 years now.
Yeah, I know. So it's really, it's not a fair...
Oh, but he just owns the house.
That's like, you know, putting paint on your apartment. The landlord does not have to do that if you want.
But you can always ask. The worst they can do is say no.
I'll be happy to. Okay.
The second, also in the wide-area network line item, there is a capital fund request, and I believe it's $5,000, which is really, OpenCape is going to provide our connection to their network directly in what is the old BCI building, the building that's being refurbished to theirs. We will, we, Barnstable County, will need to be able to route that over our entire network, obviously. We have our own fiber into that building, so that part is not the problem. But it will take roughly $5,000 to be able, professional services to be able to come in and route, and route that service throughout this entire campus here. So that's what the second request in there is for.
Okay. And what is the timeline projection for that? I mean, like, when...
Well, that, in terms of, I don't anticipate that that is a big thing for Barnstable County IT to coordinate. When Dan has his network up, and he says our connection is available, you know, I expect within simply the couple of weeks it takes to coordinate with a vendor.
But that's like, end of this year, isn't it? In this calendar year, it's supposed to happen. I thought it was closer to the end.
Yeah.
Then, so can we look at that figure and start plotting it out over some time? I mean, even if we're not going to make that connection now, put some money aside specifically that's going to be sort of like in a capital improvement.
Yeah, well, I think Pat was raised that that sort of saying about that, like, the Farmhouse, if that's crucial, we'd use that.
Right, yeah.
And we don't have too many tomorrow, but we have like some reserve money today.
And maybe it would accrue some interest. The other thing I was thinking is, instead of this being part of our operating budget, if these funds couldn't come from a different source?
Well, he does have these as capital. These are all capital expenditures John has proposed.
These, so these are not part of the operating budget?
We have a lot of capital suddenly...
Exactly. This is the kind of concern. You're sort of like...
Being used.
Yeah, exactly.
And then there's bonding that we can look at.
If you have to get it bonds back, that's what you're doing.
Right, that's true.
But still, it's, gives you...
But it depends on, again...
It gives you...
But you have to look at priority when you do that. I mean, if you're going to go that way, even if you're going to go the capital route, what are the priorities in the first six months, the last six months, the second year, the third year? I mean, I would like to see this laid out in terms of priorities, what needs to be done this year, next year, the year after, what's the total cost, and then what's the best funding option for these expenses? You know, because right now, we're just looking at the total cost of doing it. But I think we should have a funding plan based on priority.
And if I could just now just jump over to Peter. Peter, are you agreeing with this path? I mean, do you see what we're saying here, and we're on that right line? And you could even work with John in plotting that?
It's a bunch of investments.
Yeah.
John's actually started. If you look at his backup pages...
I'm looking at this, yeah.
He has the front page, which is kind of the summary of everything, and then backups for each of the piece.
So how it's... So, how it's going to be timed out?
On many of them, he's sort of put, well, I should, turn to the one that has that 556 number, I tell you.
Yeah, the second to the last.
And he's actually sort of giving you a creative prioritization, yeah. Crucial, obviously, we need, need is second, it looks like a nice is, you know, if we could do it, that would be nice, so he's sort of prioritizing.
But see, we could look at different pots of funding, maybe, for some of this too.
Yeah.
If something is really needed this year, we might look at one source of funding, and then maybe, there might be another source of funding this year, that will allow us to do maybe the need, as opposed to the crucial, and then maybe some other, I don't know, I think we'll have to look at, this is such a big deal, this whole thing with Open Cape and all this, that I think it takes a big, major kind of plan of everything that needs to be done, all the costs, as you say, you've outlined it in terms of crucial, need, and nice, and then the whole funding options that are available to pay for.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of additional backup, you know, that I basically know off the top of my head, and we can kind of refine any information you need, you know, I've got a lot of it already.
So, maybe you could come back with that within a couple of weeks, maybe?
Well, let me do this, let me kind of summarize what all the capital requests are out there.
Oh, okay, that would be very helpful.
Might give you a bigger picture, and then we can have maybe John and John Blaisdell come back and sort of say, "This is why I need that, this is why I need that."
Yeah, exactly, and what the funding options are.
The funding options are basically three, you could pay it for out of the general fund, which is sort of today's money, which we see is the tightest of the type. You pay for it out of the capital fund, which spreads it out over time, but we're going to get into a point, and I can kind of calculate for you where we are in the capital fund, and how much that debt service would be over time, already, we're working on a bond issue for that. And then the third option would be, we do have some money left in the building reserve fund, cash, we have some cash left over, we did talk about, and I'm still waiting for John to give me the actual figures, for the health lab build-out, a supplemental for that, so we're going to use up a substantial portion of that, we have about $800,000 left, which we're going to use a substantial portion of, six or so, to fund the health lab renovation, and I'm going to bring you back a supplemental for that, so, basically, three sources, the building reserve, which doesn't have a whole lot left there, or won't after this supplemental.
And then what about other capital funds, capital expenditures, that are somewhere incorporated in the budget, do we have those as well?
Oh, yeah, I think George has maybe a capital request.
George has some, yeah, I think it would be helpful to have a whole capital round program for this year, for the next five years, what are we looking at?
Exactly.
Do you have a question?
He still has a question.
Oh, I have.
What I see in this, and what I saw in some of the applications for software selection, I don't hear anything about a users group, I hear the decisions you're making with regard to where you think these should go, but I seem to recall that you did put together something like that, and I was wondering if they are actively engaged and involved in telling you what they need in order to accomplish what they perceive as benefits out of this program.
Yeah, absolutely, we meet almost every month, the goal is to meet 12 times a year, you know, life gets in the way, or other business gets in the way, that meeting would have been today, for instance, so it's not today, so absolutely, and as a matter of fact, next week, we will be reviewing actually what I presented to you, so they can actually see now, you know, through their input, what we actually did request too, you know, and that's part of keeping in mind, and I, there are specifically, from the goals and measures, when I talk about a disaster recovery plan and a Phase Two there, that's actually getting them involved in actually the planning of Phase Two specifically, which I think is a really good aspect of this plan, that they can really actively participate in as well. Some of this stuff is just, some of its stuff, like enterprise wireless, enterprise fax stuff, it's just too simple, you know, don't need a lot of input on, basically.
To me, a compelling argument is always the user, or the proposed user of the equipment makes a case for the kind of contribution the addition of this equipment makes to the accomplishment of their particular mission.
Yeah.
Because that, to me, is, helps me as far as believing and supporting priorities that are established. If we're looking at capital funding, if we're looking at investment, if we're looking at applying money, I think that hearing from the, let's say, the operational part of our organization as to, you know, mission essential appointment, I think is a very compelling argument to set our priorities as far as support.
And please keep in mind too, don't forget, it's not just the one representative from every department that shows up once a month at that meeting, I mean, you know, I'm out there all the time talking to department heads, and middle-level managers, and line staff in the course of all the things that I'm doing, and getting this feedback from a lot of places, and there's very few things, and this budget is reflective of each budget that are brought to you for the last four years, there's very few things that are just entirely ideas from within IT themselves.
Right.
You know, and again, we're also, we also have the added benefit still, we're only in year three since Peter did the formal analysis process, you know, and that's still something that we look back and see which requests align to that, you know, in essence, we've already got a lot of feedback that, yes, we need these things, enterprise wireless is a good example.
Anything you wanted to add to that, Peter, no?
We're going to get to...
Okay, what you were...
Technology system, we're going to, you know, John's going to talk about that in a minute. Other capital requests and operational requests involved with Open Cape do include, there is, we covered that, there is a $20,000 request under interior renovations, which is to automate with audio and video equipment the conference, the shared conference room that will be in the BCI space.
So, what page is this one? Is that on the budget?
That's, it's the same, no, it's not, interior renovations training room, it's two pages before the wide-area network, it's account number 00510585806, next year I will number these pages for all of us.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, they're different tab on this spreadsheet.
Right, exactly, yeah, because basically what Dan is...
Oh, $56,000?
Thirty-eight thousand, the bottom line should be 38,000.
I get 38,000 too far.
Original 56, yes, this year is a 56.
So, that's already appropriated for 56.
This year is a 56, yeah.
Yeah, and next year, the request is going down to 38, of that 38, 20,000 is to do the BCI conference room, the other 18,000 would be to complete the implementation of the AV stuff.
Who's the BCI conference room? Well, that's the one in the public safety building.
That's right, that's right.
No, and I think of BCI now as the other building, why are we doing it up there?
Yeah, yeah, basically, what Open Cape is giving us is the shell of a conference room that we can use, and it would be network-ready, but, you know, we're putting in smart board, speaker system, those sorts of things.
That includes all that.
Yeah, that's what that 20,000 is, yeah. There, we do have in our operational budget, under internet access...
Can I ask a question about the whole Open Cape thing, this is, goes back to, you know, John, you have the coordinator in there, it's kind of helpful about kind of putting a number on it, a 60-grand salary, so maybe talk a little bit about how you envision it, because I'm not sure I envision it the same way, or anybody does at this point in time.
Yeah, yeah, well, certainly, and you were nice enough to provide me with Dan Gallagher's letter about requesting that we kind of, we, being the county, all of us together, take charge of the regional umbrella service network, which I definitely think is the way to go, and there's a lot of different elements involved in that, and as I had said to Mark when he provided me with the letter, this is something Peter and I have been doing a lot of, you know, discussions on over the period. The first thing, the first thing kind of is needed is a coordinator, or, and I put coordinator, and when I was talking to Peter earlier today, just kind of reviewing this, I'm kind of thinking of it almost more like at a director level in reality, but the first thing that will be needed, and I'm assuming all of you folks, for instance, have also seen presentations by Ed Centio on the e-permitting system as well, and that's a pretty good example of some of the sort of functions that will be necessary over time. Ed has, in what he's contributed to this project, he's kind of been the champion of that effort, he has done lots of analysis, he's done a ton of interviewing with towns, he's got their requirements, he's kind of aligned their requirements to the services that are out there, he's even done an analysis of those services that are out there to see which ones, which vendors that provide those services make sense in this sort of relationship that we're trying to set up, and...
Speaking of e-permitting, that seems to be a very directed kind of responsibility, and I just wonder as to whether or not, since I've been hearing conversations from, you know, from different towns, specifically from Harwich, that e-permitting could be separated from, you know, the discussion of Open Cape, as to whether or not we should look at the possibility of putting that under the Cape Cod Commission with regard to the implementation of a system that basically serves what, you know, what the Cape Cod Commission does as far as a planning piece, you know, is this something that you think should stay with you, or should we send the management over to the implementing agency?
I, it's heavy IT, it's heavy IT, which is not the commission's expertise, quite frankly, and I'm not saying it has to be under Barnstable County IT either, because I think it depends on how we want to talk about regional services as we implement that.
Let me ask, it is, it's a different, Bill sort of hits on the heart of the question, but, and I'm glad you picked on this kind of e-billing one, because the e-billing one is more evolved, I think the commission put up the local technical service money to do the Ed Centio thing, so we've sort of gotten that person in who develops the thing, advertises it to the towns as the thing, and starts the process on identifying what the towns want of that thing, those are those kind of three steps.
Right, right.
This coordinator, so we know what the e-billing one is, so I sort of agree with your premises, so you take the e-billing one, which is sort of this developed e-permitting and billing, and you put it in a box, and whether that box is IT, or the commission, or some other thing, we have to figure that out, but now there's all this other stuff that Dan sort of alludes to in this letter, that I don't know what it is, I don't, you don't know what it is, you don't know what it is, we don't know what it is, and you need that Ed Centio or some other coordinator person to say, "This is what that is, here's a service, town, what do you want? Develop the service, advertise it to the town, and find out what the town actually wants of it."
Well, yes, and then the other thing to that too, is if they want to add on, is this whole idea of the data from the water sampling too, I mean, all of that, it's going to all...
Let me just say something, because I see it as even bigger than that, because we're limited resources, so it may not just be the IT stuff, although the IT stuff is a piece of it because of Open Cape, it may be...
Assessing.
Assessing, thank you, and maybe these other things that are out there, that we don't have people to do.
See, that's why I think we should deal right now with your budget to operate your department and your needs, and then take all this other Open Cape stuff, and have a separate conversation about it, and not intertwine the two, because those are major things that have regional implications, and then we have to know how many towns are going to sign on to the e-permitting. I saw the whole demonstration the other night, all the way through to where you, the building inspector, you know, you pay for it right there with PayPal or whatever, and the whole thing is done, and you got your permit in your hand, what, and that savings to the communities are huge, so I think we should separate the two discussions, because they're getting too intertwined.
Because one is the infrastructure, and one is the actual department or series of, or sections of a department that will go out for either assessing, or for e-permitting, or for building inspector, or whatever it may evolve into.
So, I think we should stick with what you need to operate your department, and then all that other will layer onto it at some point, but not maybe all of it right, and maybe before this budget cycle, we get through to approving the budget, we come back and have that discussion.
Definitely.
Okay.
In terms of Open Cape, there is increased, a request for increase in the internet access line, based on the fact that certainly through my discussions individually, and through several presentations I've seen with Dan Gallagher and Open Cape, there are likely to be, in the beginning, in reality, some fees, maintenance costs that we will be incurring, so based on conversations I've had with him, I tried to approximate a number, and I put it in my internet access line at 12,500, basically, based on information given to me by Dan, and I just want to note on that internet access line, that while it's a net increase, if it weren't for the fact that I'm budgeting for that, and the fact that I want to plan, because I know there is a possibility in this next fiscal year, I've been told there's a possibility, that our resource development program may be getting a second house in Wellfleet, and I budgeted for the internet access there, if it weren't for those two new initiatives, my internet access line actually would have gone down for this year.
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful if you just took all the Open Cape stuff out of here, and just put it separately, in the same categories, but on a separate sheet, and just kept everything you need now to operate your department if you didn't have that, and that would make it a lot easier for us to, I think, comprehend, for me to comprehend.
Sure, that's not a problem.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, it sort of raises the question, because of the 12.5, and this came up when I first saw this number, and it's like, so, you know, you're a town administrator, and you're limited resources, or a county administrator, and you're sitting here, and you're saying, "So, I have internet access now, and things are, you know, working fine, and, okay, now I add 12,500 to my budget, and theoretically, through Open Cape, I'll have bigger oomph and bigger speed, but for everything, do I need that?" So, I'm wondering, the question becomes out there, how many places are going to be doing that evaluation and saying, "Boy, why do I need to spend another 12.5 that I don't have? I'm happy with what I've got."
Right, and, and again, if some of that money is likely to be maintenance costs regarding the laterals, so if people do the laterals, and again, this is where, at this point in time, the business plan that Open Cape has is only developed to a certain amount, I'm going as much based on what Dan has told me as is in writing right now, and trying to prepare for that eventuality, so we don't hit stop.
But some of the answer, I think, John, is...
Because it may not all be internet access, it's...
Right, and also, it may justify why, in order to get e-billing and e-permitting, you may need to use the higher throughput, so to speak.
And that will go into effect next year, I mean, according to Ed Centio, that, yeah, right, assuming they get the grant money, that it could actually begin sometime in 2013, so we really do need to think about that, and that probably, well, what is the deadline, is the 17th of January for the application, when is the grant, when are the...
Thirty days.
Hmm?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Oh, 30 days, so by the mid-February, we'll know whether we have the grant or not.
I heard that.
Oh, that's very helpful, so I think that makes a big difference too, because if we don't have that grant, that changes them. When could we reschedule, John?
I'm going to probably, maybe what we'll do, John, is we're going to come up and do a little tour on, I think it's February 1st, because we're pressed for time, this has to be the assembly by...
March?
The 15th of February.
This whole budget, by the 15th of February?
So, we're really...
How'd that happen?
Well, you know, we asked for an extension last year, we might have to do that by...
No, they yelled at me, remember, John yelled at me last year?
I know, but we don't have to do that, John.
Because I assumed that it was the first meeting in March.
Happy work is done if you sit here every day.
If we get our revenues together, it won't be a problem, according to Sparrow, right?
Yeah, that's right.
But I think we can do it, I think we can fit in, so we'll do the little tour up there, then we'll meet up there, and have, I think that should be the time.
And then have this discussion again, that's, yeah, that's what I, is that okay with you?
Yeah, and we'll have Peter there as well.
Peter, we'll invite Dan.
And Dan.
Oh, yes, so we can, okay.
We can be wrapping this up, and so...
That's it.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? Yeah, that's it.
Sort of time-wise, I didn't have any other questions, just...
I mean, I have more, but I realized from time to time.
I sort of said...
We'll be able to finish this next week.
Yeah, we'll finish it up, yeah, okay, all right, in the meantime, then, I'm going to ask the commissioners to approve the commissioners' actions for tonight.
Oh, I know, Bill's in a, Bill's in a...
In a tight spot.
Um, so, that'll be fine.
Does anyone have any questions on the...
They're across the street, because they have any organization to do the KOC.
Does anyone have any questions regarding...